It is seven o'clock. We will reconvene, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and no action was taken. As I remind you, each month, this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is done for the purpose of setting goals, listening to reports of the superintendent, approving budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals, as management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. You will notice tonight that the superintendent is not here. She has asked me to add this to my opening statement. She is expressly waiving her privacy rights under HIPAA, and has asked me to let you all know that earlier this week, she sustained a detached retina and had surgery with the same doctor I had surgery with a year ago, and that everything went well, she got a great report. More importantly, she's asked me to tell you that she realizes she is the glue that holds these meetings together, and that the entire meeting is likely to go to heck in her absence, but we are to carry on as best we can. In all seriousness, things did go well. We did have a conference call together this afternoon with some folks for over an hour. She seems to be doing well. She sent a number of emails to the board and expects to be back in the office next week. I know you're watching with your one good eye, so I hope you're happy that I read your statement. We want to welcome everybody. We are very appreciative of the support and the interest you show in the Waco Public Schools. Appreciate your being here tonight. I also want to welcome those watching at home on Channel 17. And at this time, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll now go to Item 6, the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, we are pleased to have two students from Parkdale Elementary School who will lead us in the pledge, so please welcome 3rd grader Kaitlyn Phillips and 4th grader Christopher Paul Seis Jr. And everyone now join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll all go down in front for special recognition.
To begin the special recognition portion of our meeting tonight, we'd like to express our appreciation to tonight's Pledge of Allegiance leaders, who, as President Atkins said, are from Parkdale Elementary School. Kaitlyn Phillips is a 3rd grader who loves reading, math, science, and music. She's on student council. She loves any school activity. Outside of school, Kaitlyn enjoys dance, theater, playing games, traveling, and visiting historical sites. Now, her teacher says Kaitlyn shows compassion, leadership, honesty, and respect each day in class. Kaitlyn has not yet decided on a career, but at this point, she's leaning towards the medical or judicial field. And we'd also like to thank her parents, her mother, Janadia Hunter Phillips, who's here, her father, Jason Phillips, could not be here, but she brought quite a family contingent: grandmother, grandfather, great-grandmother, aunt, and uncle, all are here if you'd like to stand so you can be recognized. And Christopher Paul Seis Jr. is a 4th grader who's passionate about science. In his spare time, he enjoys playing baseball or video games. His teacher says he's the kindest, most responsible student, and she is a huge fan of his. When Christopher grows up, he wants to be an agent in the CIA. Thank you to Christopher's parents, mother Henrietta Hudson, father Christopher Seis Sr., for sharing their son with us tonight. Thank you so much. And also a thank you to Waco ISD's adoptive school partner Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving as gifts tonight. Thank you, Barnes &amp; Noble.
Excuse me?
Is the family here, the Seis family? There they are. Okay, good. Thank you. All right. The Board members, as you've heard, we are in the early stages of reviving the planetarium on the Waco High Campus. Now, to help raise awareness and to get students involved in the project, we held a space-themed art contest earlier this year called Reach for the Stars, art contest open to all Waco ISD students. We had 66 participants representing 11 different grade levels from 15 campuses. Now, prior to judging, the artwork was grouped into four age divisions. A panel of judges scored the artwork using a rubric that considered visual appeal, the contest theme, Reach for the Stars, artistic skill, and the meaning of the painting. Now, each of these participants received a certificate for their efforts. You can see the winning entries up on the screens. Each of those winners will receive four passes to the Waco ISD Planetarium once it opens. And tonight, we want to announce our three winners in that contest. In 3rd place, from Parkdale Elementary School, again, with the painting titled Star Bright, it's 5th grader Ian Wallard, his art teacher Sarah Perez, and Ian's prize, a $25 Visa gift card for his painting, and you can see it up there on your screen. The original is Norman Manning's right there on the... Yep. All right. In 2nd place, from Hillcrest Professional Development School with his painting titled Dream Big, it's 3rd grader Jonas Arroyo, his art teacher is Sarah Weatherly. Jonas won a $50 Visa gift card. You can see the painting that he created on the screen as well, called Dream Big. And the 1st place winner in this contest, judged by a group of committee members, also from Hillcrest PDS, the painting titled Possibilities. It's a 5th grader McKenna Leal, her art teacher again Sarah Weatherly, and for winning 1st place, McKenna won a $100 Visa gift card. Very good job, McKenna, and you can see her painting on the screen there on the side of that rocket ship. It says, "Waco ISD Helps Me Reach the Stars." Again, we had 15 campuses represented in that, more than 66 entries in that contest. Congratulations to our very deserving three winners, and we want to thank you and all of our artists for participating in that contest. And also, a special word of thanks to our art teachers for their support. The art that was submitted will be on display at the 11th Annual HEB Celebrity Cook-Off in February, and some of the pieces will be auctioned off in the live auction. The remaining artwork will decorate the dinner tables, and will be available for purchase as centerpieces onto the tables. So, more than 56 pieces of art from our students, Reaching for the Stars. And all the proceeds, of course, will benefit the Waco ISD Education Foundation. We want to thank the Education Foundation for sponsoring this art contest, and the Foundation provided the artists canvas boards, the paints, the brushes, and also the winners' gift cards. So, congratulations to all of our young artists. As Waco ISD staff was looking forward to enjoying a well-deserved winter break over the holidays, the Network Division of the Technology Department was busy planning critical upgrades to an outdated mail server. And the job would require a complete shutdown of the district's email system so that 2,500 email accounts could be moved onto a new storage device. Despite modern technology, it's a slow and tedious process, so to avoid interfering with district operations, this process was planned for Saturday, December 17th, after the entire district recessed for a long winter's nap. Well, tonight, we want to recognize the Waco ISD Technology Network Team for sacrificing their time with their families to execute this much-needed task. Our systems engineer, Shane Snyder. Our network engineer, David Gonzalez, who was expecting his daughter to be born at any minute when this happened. Our network specialist, Luther Ward. And our network coordinator, Daniel Castillo. That transfer was finally completed about 10:00 PM on Sunday evening, even though 2,500 email accounts were down over the weekend, no one was inconvenienced while they were at work because of the sacrifices these technology team members made. Now, unfortunately, our loyal team from Technology did not get to head home for the holidays just yet, though. The district was changing internet service providers on January 1st, and as a result, the IP address on more than 50 devices and 100 servers also had to be changed. District's firewall had to be updated, and a third-party company had to be informed of the change as well. And for compliance issues, the switch had to be made before the 1st of the year. This meant that in order for email to function in 2017, all devices had to carry the new IP addresses. That was a huge undertaking, and of course, as Murphy's Law with technology said, "If anything can go wrong, it will." After moving all the addresses, Network Coordinator Daniel Castillo discovered the assigned addresses were not registered in the Worldwide IP Registry. That's the system that identifies us as @wacoisd.org. And had Daniel not discovered this, we would not have been able to receive any emails on or after January 1st. It put a crimp in our work. And after working through the week, Daniel finally switched the email server over to the new IP address on Christmas Eve at 1:43 in the morning. But due to other problems, we were still unable to receive external emails. And after more troubleshooting and phone calls, and numerous company reps' conversations, the issue finally resolved on December 29th, allowing the technology team to head home for the winter break with only a few short days remaining. District is fortunate to have such a dedicated staff that goes to such great lengths and is willing to sacrifice their personal time, even willing to postpone the birth of a child to ensure that the district's technology is up and running. Really? Could you hold that off? Little girl came fine, right? All right, very good. We want... Thanks to all of you for all that you did to help us. Now, Board members, if you recall, two years ago, when we honored you for School Board Recognition Month, each of you got a framed portrait drawn by a different student at Dean Highland Elementary School. When we presented the artwork to you, we also recognized those students who worked hard to create that very special artwork for you. Well, since that time, we've added a new school board member, Ms. Stephanie Cordewag, and we thought that she should also have a special portrait. So, tonight, Andre Rodriguez, a 5th grader at Dean Highland, is here to present his portrait of Board Member Stephanie Cordewag. Andre painted this portrait last spring as a 4th grader in Jane Harris's art class, and we certainly want to recognize Andre for his artistic talent, thank him for helping us with this project. We needed that, Andre. And we would also like to recognize Andre's parents, if they're here with us tonight. Are your parents here? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. We have a lot of budding young artists here in Waco ISD, don't we? We're getting to see their talents tonight. Thank you, young man, for that work, and congratulations, Ms. Cordewag. All right. And speaking of School Board Recognition Month, each January, Waco ISD is joining other districts across the state to honor the countless contributions of our locally-elected school board. Now, our board is a group of seven dedicated individuals who work together on behalf of our children and also our community, and as elected officials, they are the voice of the communities, serving first and foremost in the best interest of all our schoolchildren. These public servants sit through long meetings, they read detailed reports, listen to parents' concerns, and do the hard work to benefit the students and the community at large. And they bring a variety of skills and backgrounds to their task, and they take their responsibilities seriously. They've been doing yeoman's work lately, haven't you, trustees? And the entire community is benefiting from your vigilance. In addition to working countless hours without pay, our school board members shoulder critical responsibilities and often make difficult choices. Of course, their ultimate goal is always focused on the future success of the children in our school district. Serving is a crucial link between the community and the classroom, the board's responsible for managing millions of dollars in a budget, 15,000 students, 2,500 employees, on 26 campuses. The children of Waco ISD benefit every day from your hard work and your long hours that you contribute as school board members, and you are a school board all-star team. Tonight, we're here to honor each of you with a small token of our appreciation, and to help us do that, we've called upon some of our very own Waco ISD all-stars. First off, presenting the gift to Stephanie Cordewag, we've got UHS girls soccer players, Aleah Perez and Anahi Martinez. Stephanie Cordewag's in her second year of service, representing District 2. She's a mentoring director, and we appreciate your help with the board, and thank you, ladies, for presenting that gift. Okay? Now, in his sixth year of service, Carrie DePuy, an at-large trustee, presenting his award, WHS valedictorian Haley Miller. Carrie DePuy's a local business owner, first elected to the board in 2011. Thank you, Haley and Carrie. Now, presenting the award to Angela Teakle, the Waco High School Drill Team, Sharkevia Ms. Teakle was first elected in 2010 to the board. She is a local attorney, and she represents District 4. Thank you, Sharkevia, for helping us with this award presentation tonight. Our next trustee, Board Secretary Norman Manning from District 1, and presenting his award, University High Boys Basketball Player Jabril Washington. It's not hard to figure out what sport Jabril plays, is it? And Norman's a local businessman, first elected to the board in 2009, representing District 1. Norman, thank you for your service on the board. Okay, next up, University High Football Player Jordan Perez, and this is a special award he's giving to his grandfather Larry Perez, District 3. Larry's a retired postal worker, first elected to the board in 2002, 15 years of service on the board. Thank you, Larry Perez, for that work. Now, Waco High School Football Player Will Richards III is next. Will presenting an award to our board president, Pat Atkins. He's an at-large representative on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Atkins is an attorney and partner in Teakle and Atkins Law Firm, first elected to the board in 2002. And Will, an awesome football player for our Lions as well. Thank you, Will, for your help, and thank you so much for your service, Pat. And finally, our board vice president, who's approaching 18 years of tenure on the board, Alan Sykes from District 5. And presenting his award, Waco High Boys Basketball Player Ray Hi. Alan's a senior vice president and trust officer for Extracoh Banks in Waco, first elected to the board in 1999. Alan, thank you for your service so much. And then, we've got one more award. This is for Dr. Kane. We'll give it to her in absentia. It's University High Baseball Player Dylan Chapman has that award. And thank you, Dylan, for coming up. And ladies and gentlemen, this is the Waco ISD all-star team. The Board members, we thank you for caring about our children and giving so much to our community. We support you and your dedicated service, and you are recognized and appreciated. I can't imagine a better board for a school district. And what we'd like to do now is have the athletes come back out and take a group picture with the trustees and the athletes, and then we'll get one more picture of just the trustees. So, if you'll come out and stand next to the trustee that you gave the award to, we'd like that big group picture. These are our best on the playing field and in the boardroom. All right, very good. Your Waco ISD all-star team. And trustees, we get one more group picture of you by yourself. Thank you, athletes, so much for helping tonight. One more picture of the board members, all of them, please, the trustees. All right, very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and trustees. That is our special recognition for this evening.
Unless I hear an objection, we're going to take a couple of matters out of order because we have some guests here tonight that we want to be able to get on the road, headed back home. So, we will drop down to Item 10A, consider hiring of administrator, and I believe... Rick, are you presenting that? All right.
A recommendation this evening for principal of University High School is Dr. Ricky Edison. Dr. Ricky Edison has been in education for 20 years. He started his career teaching government and coaching at University High School. He went on to serve as assistant principal at Bell's Hill Elementary School before accepting the position of principal at South Waco Elementary. After three years at South Waco, Dr. Edison was named the superintendent of Abbott ISD, where he has served the past six years. Dr. Edison received his Bachelor of Science from Baylor University, his Master of Science from Tarleton, and his doctorate also from Tarleton. In his personal life, he enjoys spending time with his family, including his wife Carrie and their two children, Mason and Murphy. He especially enjoys traveling to different stadiums for sporting events and loves teaching an adult school at his church.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Before we can applaud for you, Ricky, we need to have a vote, so I will entertain a motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag.
Mr. Atkins, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to call Dr. Shepherd up. He would like to make a small presentation to Dr. Edison.
Let us vote first.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'd hate to have to remove the... If it doesn't go well.
That's true.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Dr. Shepherd, I believe you're up.
Mr. Edison, the new principal always gets a t-shirt or the colors from your school, but we want Dr. Edison to know that when he becomes University High School principal, he also becomes king of South Waco.
Do you have some family you want to introduce here tonight?
Absolutely. First of all, thank you, Mr. Hartley, and Dr. Kane, and Board of Trustees. I really appreciate this. I'm very excited about this new endeavor, very thankful for this opportunity here. There are a few people here I would like to thank, and I'm just humbled by the amount of people that showed up for university, the faculty and staff, so thank y'all so much. It means so much to me, being here. Thank you very much. Makes me feel not so silly with this robe on, I guess. But I would like to recognize a couple of people, if I may. My family, my beautiful wife Carrie here, my two kids, Mason and Murphy, my brother's here... Yes, there's Murphy. My brother David, sister-in-law Casey, and a couple more people. Ms. Cone, she gave me my first administration job at Bell's Hill. She's like a mother to me, and I thank her very much for being here. And also, Tarrell Lloyd, he's meant the world to me. He's like a father figure. He coached me in basketball. We coached together, and now we get to work together one more time. So, I am super excited, ready to get over there, ready to learn some great stuff from Dr. Shepherd and all the good people over there. So, thank y'all very much for this opportunity.
We'll move on and stay on discussion of possible action to discuss the 2015-16 external audit report. Ms. Davis?
Yes, we have with us tonight our partner in charge of our audit, Debbie Kirkham, and she's going to give you a presentation on the audit results.
Thank you, Sher.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight to present to you the annual financial report. As you turn through your audit report, as on page 13 is the management's discussion and analysis, and throughout the MDNA are several tables with numbers. And I just want to mention that those tables are what we call the government-wide. They're a consolidated financial position of the district, similar to a business that consolidates all of its funds and records the capital assets and long-term liabilities. And this is only done once a year for school districts. School districts are required to keep their books on a modified accrual basis, and one time during the year, they consolidate all of that and convert it into a full accrual basis, similar to your businesses out in the community. So, when you look at those tables and you look at those numbers and you say, "Well, that's not anything similar to what Ms. Davis has prepared and showed to us," and those tables are representative of... If you look at the exhibits, beginning on pages 29 and 30 and 31, that's just a recap of those same government-wide tables. And when you look in those, those have the capital assets, the long-term liabilities, it also has a net pension liability, and things that we call deferred outflows and inflows. So, I just want to mention to you, when you look at those and you say, "Oh, our net position, $60 million," that's not the same as fund balance, because it includes capital assets that can't be expended. And when you look at the bottom of page 29, and that $60 million, 26 million of that is capital assets. So, I'd just like to focus and let people know, when you open up the audit report and you see those first two pages, and they look so much different than the numbers that you've been provided previously. But if you turn over to page 31, the financial statements that I'm going to go through in detail are the ones that you look at on a regular basis, it's the basis that you also budget on, which is, as accountants, we call it a modified accrual basis of accounting. So, beginning on page 31, the first column is the general fund, which accounts for the general operations of the school district. And total assets were $58.3 million, which was primarily cash, $50 million, and property taxes of $2 million. You had some other large items due from other funds of $3 million, and your long-term investments, $3.4 million. Your liabilities in the general fund totaled $11.6 million, which was made up of accounts payable and some short-term debt, payroll liabilities, accrued wages payable, et cetera. Your fund balance was $45.9 million in the general fund at the end of the year. Your fund balance was $45.9 million in the general fund at the end of the year. The next column on page 31 is your school lunch program, which had $2.1 million in assets, $453,000 in liabilities, and a fund balance of $1.7 million. The next column on page 31 is your debt service fund, which accounts for the collection of property taxes for the payment of general obligation bonds, had assets of $4.9 million. You had liabilities of $148,000, $171,000 deferred inflows, $4.6 million in fund balance. The next column, the capital projects fund, which accounts for the proceeds for bond issues for the construction as outlined in those bond issues, had $1,004 in assets, $171,000 in liabilities, and $1.2 million in fund balance. The next column, your non-major governmental funds. Behind the notes to the financial statements are all the special revenue funds, like Title I Special Ed and various type state grants. And all of those are what we refer to as the non-major funds, and they're all consolidated in one column. But if you want to look at the breakdown, which I'm not going to go through tonight, it's after the notes to the financial statements in your audit report. But collectively, they had $5.3 million in assets, $4.8 million in liabilities, and $456,000 in fund balance. Flipping over to page 33 is the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances of each of those funds. You can see the first column, the general fund, took in $135 million. Expenditures were $130 million. Some other financing sources and uses that netted to $1.8 million. So an overall increase in fund balance of $2.9 million for the general fund, which brought it from $42.9 million to $45.9 million. The next column, again, the special national school breakfast and lunch fund, had $9.5 million in revenues, $9.4 million in expenditures, $160,000 excess, $4.8 million in other fin- I mean, $4,811, pardon me, in other sources, and an overall increase of $165,000, which brought that fund balance from $1.5 million to $1.7 million. The next column, the debt service fund, took in $12.7 million, and expenditures were $15 million. You had other financing sources and uses because you had a refunding in the current year. And you can see the refunding bonds were $47 million in par value, $1.8 transfer in, a premium on those bonds of $11 million. And then your payment to the refunded, bond-refunded escrow agent of $2.3 million. So overall increase in the fund balance of the debt service fund, $18,000, which brought it from $4,627 to $4,646. The next fund, the capital projects fund, took in $1,000. That's primarily interest earnings, $783,000 in expenditures, an overall decrease of $782,000, which the fund balance went from $2.0 million to $1.2 million. The next column, again, is all the special revenue funds combined into one column of $21.4 million in revenues, $21.5 million in expenditures, other sources of $55,000, and an overall decrease of $34,000, which brought fund balance from $491,000 to $456,000. On page 35 is the proprietary fund, internal service fund, for your workers' compensation fund. And you can see that you had $1,003 in assets, liabilities, $329,000, and a net position of $1,011,000. On page 36 are the revenues and expenditures of those funds. And you can see the operating revenues were $430,000, and expenditures were $211,000, which was an increase of $218,000, which brought the net position from $793,000 to $1,011. And I just want to mention, in the workers' comp fund, you're not only recording the claims that you're aware of, but to be conservative, the school district gets a report from the actuaries that give us a, what we call is an IBNR, incurred but not reported claims, knowing that workers' comp claims can go out sometime. So just want to let you know, this is a conservative. When you look at page 35, and that liability of $311,000, that's a number that comes from the actuaries. It says, this is kind of the unknown, that we think based on your payroll dollars, certain percents each year of what should be held back for an IBNR estimated number. The remainder of the report are the notes to the financial statements. Probably one of the most important notes is on page 60. It's your long-term liabilities. And the table in the middle of the page 60 primarily gives you just an overall of what the beginning balance was, $209 million additions of $85 million, reductions of $67 million, and an ending balance at 83116 was $227 million. And of that, again, is that net pension liability that was a new pronouncement that had to be included last year. We referred to as GASB 6871 of $35.7 million. Also, on page 61, if you're wanting to know what makes the breakdown of those general obligation bonds, the table on the page, at the top of page 61 breaks down each of the different bond issues. The balance is outstanding on those. And the table at the bottom of page 61 gives the principal and interest requirements to maturity. Also, on page 62 at the top of the page, gives the breakdown of the notes payable also. The lease revenue bonds are at the top of page 63. So I just want to let you know that that first table is kind of like your consolidated table, and then thereafter, all the different parenthetical tables are breaking down each of those different debt instruments. And then it probably comes to the summary that TEA looks at it the most, which is, I'm going to skip all those combining and special revenue funds that are non-major, and go over to page 93. And TEA gets this information in many different ways. Ms. Davis will file the PMS with the state of Texas. They'll get an ASCII format that she'll file. She'll also send a PDF file that'll be on the TEA's website. But when they get all of that data, what they want to know is, we get a lot of data electronically, and we want to know, can we rely on it? And when we look at, on page 93, that schedule of findings and question cost. And the three things under, first, under financial statements, what type of auditor's report was issued. The report was an unmodified, a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that you can obtain that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, meaning that the assets, the liabilities of revenue and expenditures are fairly stated in this report. Also, there were no material weaknesses. There were no significant deficiencies or noncompliance as it relates to the financial statements. Then, because the district receives over $750,000 in federal funds, you're also required to have a single audit. So in the middle of page 93, under federal awards, you see under number five, you also got an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest, clean opinion. And the programs that we tested this year are under item 7. We did the Special Ed Cluster, that's referred to 84027 and 84173. We also did the Title II, Teacher and Principal Training. And we also audited the Texas Title I Priority School Cycle III. So for all of those three grants, you also received a clean, unmodified opinion. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or noncompliance as it related to those three grants. And my just compliments to Ms. Davis and all of the staff. At interim, when we come in, we sent a planning memorandum. She's uploading things to our portal. Before we get here, we come in and we're doing many tests, and I just appreciate her staff. And each one of those grant coordinators that we ask for many things for, as we're testing payroll and testing expenditures, et cetera. My compliments to them for a clean, unqualified opinion. Thank you. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions concerning the audit?
Thank you.
Wait, wait. Do we have a cape for the auditor like we had for the principal? Is there, who's got the auditor's cape? Did you not bring one, Ms. Davis? All right. Then I will, absent a-
We still do things like that.
No humor. No humor among accountants. I understand. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the annual financial and compliance report as presented. Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Manning. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've got one more guest here. Wes, you want to go ahead and present the update on the Heart of Texas Fairgrounds and surrounding properties? Which is item 11A.
Yes, sir. I'll hand these out because it may be a little easier to read.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just for a brief introduction, some of you probably saw the article in the newspaper, I guess, beginning of last week, where the county commissioners have approved a resolution to submit a feasibility study in connection with a ask, perhaps on the May ballot, for a venue tax, which would develop the Extraco Event Center, but also directly impact Waco ISD in terms of acquiring property and perhaps a new track and soccer practice facility. And so Dr. Kane asked Wes Allison, the executive director of the Heart of Texas Fairgrounds, to give the board an update and sort of an overview of what the project scope is. So Wes, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Pat. I appreciate that. I will be as brief as possible to go through here, but if you have questions as we go, please ask them. And so we'll go through them. Let me, let me first say that this is a process that started a number of years ago with the, with the county and the school swapping some property to build a soccer field. Then the city required a sidewalk, and we all got together and decided a sidewalk to nowhere didn't really fit for what we all needed, and so we have revamped. And if you jump forward from that, then about eight months ago, we began the process of doing the feasibility study. The master plan involved many of the staff members of WISD, Dr. Kane, and others, as well as folks from the Commissioners Court, the City of Waco, and then our Board of Directors there at the fair. And so we've been looking at this for a number of, a number of years, really, as we look at what that campus looks like, where we, where we see needs for all entities. I will tell you, this is a wonderful partnership. And for those of y'all that have been in this community many, many years, you will know that a partnership between the school, the county, and the city didn't happen not that many years ago. And so it's been a very much a blessing and a wonderful thing that we could bring all these groups together. We were charged, as the fair, with the task of trying to help facilitate the professionals to help put this together. And so we hired Populus, which you'll know Populus is an architectural firm that worked on Baylor Stadium. They've also done many, many projects across the world. They're worldwide and have a specific division that works in fairgrounds and event facilities and those kind of things. In addition, we, again, about six months ago, hired the company called Convention, Sports, and Leisure, which is one of the leading feasibility studies in North America, to look at this and tell us what was feasible, mainly from three areas: economic impact, community venue, and how we create a venue there that can serve our community and constituents across many, many areas of the county. And finally, to create a sustainable model that ultimately we, as taxpayers, are not burdened with upgrades and those kind of things at the Heart of Texas Fairgrounds Extraco Event Center as we know it today. And so, just as another side note, the county owns the property. We, as the fair board, lease it from them. We are charged with operating it and creating economic impact with no public funds. So we operate that as a standalone business, relying on the folks who come to the fair, as well as the many events that we do throughout the year. So I'll run through this very quickly and share some things with you. Mainly, I want you to look at the pictures and see what you see there. And if you look at the bottom picture, you will see that the yellow buildings represent Waco High School, and that red circle, oblong circle, is a track. If you, as I'm sure you've all seen those before in drawings. That is a track and two soccer fields that would be on property that WISD would acquire through the trades that would be made through the city and the county. Just so you know, there's about 13 acres that would, under this proposal, would come to property of the school. Then, as part of the venue tax, the school would be made whole in building a new track facility, as well as two new soccer fields to use there at Waco High School. The big baseball diamond that you see will ultimately replace Laker Little League, or the five complex of baseball diamonds would replace Laker Little League's properties that would be, in essence, right there to the, as you're looking at it, toward the Situation Analysis area that's in green, where Laker Little League is currently, if you think about where those spaces are there. It would also replace the Challenger League Field, if many of you are familiar with what happens there with the Challenger League Field, as the track and the two soccer field displaces those properties. So in essence, then, if you look back up at the, at the top building, and if you all turn around, I'm going to point at a few things here with my pointer from way up here. I think it'll reach, maybe, if I don't get some. Okay. So where we are, there's the track, there's the new baseball complex for Laker Little League. Those properties would, as we look at partnerships and how we can better utilize those, especially Laker Little League, to complement what we do and be able to utilize that potentially in non-Laker Little League times to create some tournaments and those kind of things. This parking lot is where the driving range is currently, if you know about the old Laker Driving Range. It would become a common, shared parking lot. This road that runs right here is one thing that Dr. Kane and I have talked about a number of times. This is Callcord, that turns into 44th Street and comes now straight back here. This is the Realtor Building, if you know that, the old BRA Building, some of those things that sit on Cobb's over here. We're going to reroute that road a little bit and make it flow a little better, and then we're going to control it. One of the things that Dr. Kane and I talked about a lot is, how do we control traffic around this whole campus to make it safer for our young people that are going to WISD? And then ultimately, how do we manage it during fairtime and different events that we have? If you look at the top picture from a standpoint of what new things will be added, and it's listed some over here, this building right here that may be easier to look at on your picture is a new multipurpose building. That multipurpose building would be used for items such as volleyball tournaments, basketball tournaments, gymnastics, wrestling, any kind of sporting events that we can put in there, as well as if WISD, for example, wanted to host a UIL competition in robotics or something like that and needed larger space. That building is about 80,000 square feet. It's got 35-foot ceilings as proposed, and would be about 55,000 square feet of open space. So for trade shows, and I'll show you some pictures of that in a little bit. From a standpoint of what we currently do there at the Extraco Facility, the Coliseum, the Show Pavilion, a lot of equine-type activities, and I'm going to direct you down here to the bottom picture. This is a new arena to allow us to do more equine and livestock events, as well as four new stall barns that would allow us to do some, some other equine activities. What that allows us to do ultimately is then take the Coliseum and do more, less dirt events in there. Right now, it gets used as an arena a lot of times, and so we know we can be more efficient with that space if we use it as a championship court, say, if we hosted a basketball tournament for our community. And so we can do some things like that. There are a lot of great opportunities in portable equipment that we can bring in and utilize those things and make it very efficient, and create and drive what will ultimately drive the payment of this, and that is through a venue tax. And the venue tax is simply a 2% hotel motel tax or a 5% tax on rental cars that you will know, if you know, other venues such as NRG Stadium, and Houston was built with one of those. Abilene has one there in, for their expo center and football field there in Abilene. Amarillo has one for what they call the Amarillo National Center. Many communities, including even those to our south in Bell County, have these type activities to fund at no taxpayer dollars to you. It's basically, if you think about a $100 room, you'd pay $2 on that $100 room if you were coming to our community to stay. And so that's how we fund these activities. So with that, I'll ask you to turn back to your paper, and we'll look here. The next rendition is basically a drawing, if you will, of the expo center. As I said, about 53,000 square feet of rentable space, 80,000 gross feet space. And so ultimately, we want to use this building as a place not to put horses or cows or sows or anything like that. We're going to utilize it for human traffic, and we're going to utilize it to host convention, trade shows, sporting events. And also, we're working with the city, and we'll be working with Parks and Rec to allow for some league-type play activities that would go on in there during the week. So we know that activities for us happen Thursday through Sunday, so we need to be able to utilize that building Monday through Friday, I mean, excuse me, Monday through Wednesday and even Sunday night, to be able to include with it some, some league play type things that we need to service that area of our community over there in and around the Waco High area. Onto the next slide. Here's really what- Here's really what we talk about and what ultimately, and I'm going to paraphrase this again, just to share it with you. The thing that CSL looked at was really, what is the demand for this property, and what is the demand and ultimately growth potential? And I think there is a unique opportunity here that we presented through the planning that was done with the school district folks, the county, the city, and our folks there at the fair, is that we presented a plan to CSL like they've never seen before. And that was one that they said, a lot of times, everybody's eyes are bigger than their stomachs. They want more than they can really afford, and ultimately, the plan that we put together, when they came back and really looked at that and talked to a number of people that might utilize this facility, they said, you know what, you're right on target. You're right where you need to be, there's potential growth in the future that give you an opportunity. The equestrian and livestock thing is what we do out there already in those events, and ultimately adding to it only adds to our economic impact in the community. What is really unique is the flat floor space that we have in this new state-of-the-art, multipurpose exhibition center. The unique thing that that offers is, like I said, it's 55,000 to 60,000 square feet, and those determinations will be made as the architects begin to work on it. But it's something that we do not have currently in Waco. It's a facility that can host many different events, but not compete with our convention center. The convention center has the hotels near it and the things that it needs to be competitive in the convention market, where we want to be competitive is in the trade show, the youth sports activities, those kind of things that we can bring in folks from all across our state and nation in order to participate. We looked at a number of facilities, we actually looked at a facility in South Dakota. They hosted the National Amateur Bowling League Championships in a building just like this one, that had no bowling alley in it before they brought in portable bowling alleys. And so it's possible in square footage and size to do pretty much anything in that building. And so, we are very, very excited to bring that to our campus, and to be able to look at it ultimately in a new way, that we're not just fairgrounds, we're ultimately what we are and what our name implies, is a true event center that can serve the community. The next thing is the project costs and projected project costs that Populus put together. As we look at here, the event facilities represent the expo center, some of the equine and needed accessories for it. The recreational facilities to the right of the screen would represent the track, bleachers and the soccer fields, and then the five-plex with the Challenger League of Baseball. There's also, as we look at just the site work right below that, about $4.3 million in site work that would need to be done, and moving streets and those kind of activities. And then what you see there in future phases ultimately represents the full scope of the project is about $42 million. Right now, with where we're proposing is to begin with about a $34.3 million, which would cover the events facilities, the recreational facilities, and the site facilities. So, some of those additional activities where we look at some other things where we would ultimately, if you look at those pictures and some other pictures that are going to come out later this month, we can put all of this square footage and be very unique in the world of equine and event facilities, in that we can put it all under one roof. And we'll do that through connectors that connect the expo center to the Coliseum. The Coliseum connects to the Show Pavilion, the Show Pavilion then would connect to all of the stall barns and the new arenas. And so that's very, very unique in our world, and so we're very excited about that, because that means you can have ancillary volleyball games going on in the new expo center, while in the Coliseum, we have a championship court there, and you never have to go outside to transfer from one of those venues to the other. So that's a really unique and great opportunity that we have. Next, and I'm going to run through these pretty fast, but it just represents the annual activity at the Coliseum, or at the event center currently, and where we see that growth coming in future. I will point out that one thing we don't have is Sports and Rec. And so as we look at that expanded EEC opportunities in about 20 weekends, we're talking about not, that's 20 individual events that would come in brand-new to Waco to create economic impact. Next is another way that we look at that is just in stabilized years, so we know through the construction years, which could be obviously up to about three to four years in constructing all of these products and how they get built. Obviously, there's some things that have to be talked about, but ultimately, we almost double our current event days. So currently, there's 220 days in the year that the facility is used for an event. We would go to 410. That means that basically what you're, you say there's not but 365 days, I knew you were thinking that, Carrie, you were like, your math's terrible, but it's really not. Yeah, it's Aggie math. So, it, what will happen is, by moving these facilities around, then it gives us an opportunity to host multiple events. So in essence, we could be having a concert in the Coliseum, we could be having a trade show in the new expo center, as well as two horse shows in the back. And so, in essence, we could be using the same facility that we use for one event now, we could multiply that times three, in essence. And so we're very excited about that opportunity as well to expand that. That's really what Populus looked at, to try to create a good flow for traffic and human movement, as well as vehicle and animal traffic. So again, yes, sir?
What's the capacity, what you looking at for these events? I mean, what, 20, 30,000 people, or what?
No, as we look at, as we, it depends on the event. As we look at...
When you talk about double events, two or three events at the same time, you know?
So, as we look at that, it really depends on the event. So as we look, I'll give you two examples. One, first, in the equine side of what we do. We would go right now, we have 750 horse stalls, that's how we look at everything, is how many stalls do we fill on a weekend? Like, we have 100 jumpers out there right now. Currently, we have about 750. It will take us to almost 1,400 stalls. We will add almost 600 stalls to the facility. So, we know, on a given weekend, typically, we, if we have 1,400 stalls, there's about three people per horse that come with that horse. So, we would, that would basically, again, we double our number of stalls, and so we would double the number of people attending there. It's, when you look at the Coliseum and Coliseum events, the Coliseum only seats about 6,000 people, and so it can seat about 8,000 to 10,000, depending on the configuration for a concert. So we really wouldn't double the size of the Coliseum. It's not going to change. As we talk about the other venues and we talk about the flat floor space, then that totally depends upon the number of teams that may be coming for, say, a volleyball tournament, the number of cheerleaders that may be coming in to cheer and on a cheer team, and so it's really hard to say estimate what those are. There are some estimated numbers that says right now, we would, again, as we kind of double our event days, we're not going to quite double our attendance, which we estimate, you know, outside of the fair, about 200,000, so it would push our attendance to over 400,000 as we look at that.
Per year?
Per year, yes, sir, per year. So utilization is just how it's utilized. Again, it's about being efficient with what we do. If you look at, again, the non-local attendance is the next page, this does not account local folks that come to the fair, so there's your 201, as we increase those numbers of non-local attendees. The next one is just talking about hotel room nights, because that's what feeds this. And so as I spoke to the hotel folks the other day, and talking to the hoteliers that own hotels, the 60% increase in hotel room nights makes a big deal to them. Because obviously, when we talk about adding 2% in the hotels, right now, we're at 13% as a county. It would move that to 15%, which puts us in line with Bell County, Taylor County, Potter and Randall County in the Amarillo area. As you look at Houston, San Antonio, Austin, all of those are at 17%, which is the max number you can put, can add on hotel. Quickly, about a rationale, I think, as we look at using public sector money, then I think the unique thing here in using it in construction, not operations, because as I said before, we function on our own from an operations standpoint. It's our job to make and take care of that facility and continued maintenance and upkeep, as well as, for us, making a profit, but then also for us, in our nonprofit status, then we'll give away about $250,000 in scholarships annually. And so we're very proud of that fact, that we can do that, as well as maintain and be effective. There's a lot of the other things there, and we talk about quality of life and those things that are, you know, unqualified or unquotative analysis there, so it's very important to us, that we be able to bring something new to the community that doesn't already exist in what we're growing. The last two pages, and I'm not going to bore you with those numbers, because I can't read them from here anyway, and so, basically, what I'll tell you is that if you look at those bottom two lines where it starts red and then turns black, and look all the way to the right, as I said before, the cost of the project at 42 million, then we expect that we will more than surpass that amount in being able to pay for, and then continuing to sustain the facilities there. And again, as I said early on, not having to dip into your pocket or my pocket as a taxpayer of McLennan County, to ever see a need to upgrade or continue to grow the facilities there on our campus. And so, again, I want to say thanks to Dr. Kane, even though I know she's watching with her one good eye, that, you know, without her and her staff and working through this project, we would have never gotten it done. And so, it's been wonderful, Pat's been involved as well, and so we've just, we've had a great time sharing with the county and the city and the school and the fair folks, a great, what I think will be a great partnership. Ultimately, it gives some new facilities to Waco High, and that hopefully, as we see continued opportunities to partner with the school district to bring events here, whether that be basketball tournaments, or UIL events, or those things that we can partner with, then I want you all to know that we are very much on board with that and look forward to continuing that neighbor relationship that we already have, and is very good with Mr. Love and his staff over there at Waco High.
Another question, Pat.
Thank you, Wes. Yes, sir.
Okay. What is the status? I know I've been reading about the county and ADA. What is your status at the Coliseum with that? Are you, aren't you guys part of that also, that you are not in compliance?
We are not in compliance as determined by the Department of Justice, as is the courthouse and a number of other venues. We work on that daily. That project has a time limit on it that has to occur.
What's the, do you have approximate value, price on that?
I do not know that, because only thing we do is, we just, we work with the county administrator to work on solutions for the problem, and then it's up to the county. That would be, those costs are not part of what we do, because it's, again, a county-owned facility, not a, we don't own the facility, so those are...
Now, of course, with all these new projects that you, of course, they're going to be up to ADA standards.
Yes, sir. Interestingly enough, that a lot of those issues that we're tackling right now are good with the state. If you look at the state mandated requirements for when, like the Coliseum was redone in the late 90s, and the ranges that it falls into, but the DOJ, as an example, our urinals are a half-inch too tall. Every urinal in there is a half-inch too tall.
And what do you think, once again, maximum? Full-blown weekend, everything? What is your estimated maximum capacity that you can handle over there? Or you would be able to handle them, once everything?
With parking and all of those kind of things, and looking at the staggered events that we typically see in an event world, where, let's say, we were doing a concert, some kind of trade show or volleyball tournament in the expo building, and then two horse shows, then that, probably that maximum capacity of people that we're going to look at handling at any one time is going to be 15,000 to 20,000 max.
And so you're going to have parking?
Yeah, you can divide that number by about three, and say that's the number of cars we would see, based on three to five, depending on the event. Obviously, when you're talking about a volleyball-type event, then you see that, okay, we have one volleyball player, but mom, dad, and another child potentially are going, or two children, and so that one car may hold up to five folks, whereas if we look at a concert-type activity, then it may just be my wife and I. And so you'd only have two in that car. So, the capacity is there to handle that. That's one of the things that Populus looked at, was to determine the capacity within the facility and within the campus, our side of the campus, and what we could handle, so...
And the safety issue is that when you, issues or events are going on during the day, that there is a buffer zone between the convention, I mean, your place and Waco High, right?
Yes, sir.
What's that buffer zone going to be? Is it going to be the street? Is it going to be fences?
It would be fences. That's one of the things I talked about earlier, about Dr. Kane and I, talking a lot about the ability to lock portions of that down, and a lot of things about managing Call Cord and 44th Street, and how that currently WISD manages it with, we want to manage it further with the ability to just turn that into bus traffic. So, you know, some of that will be closing some streets that will involve the City of Waco and being able to do that. And so, those management practices will be extended, I guess is the best way to say that, Mr. Manning. So as we manage that, we can be protective of both our students and those that are on our campus as well.
Other questions?
Laker Peewee?
Yeah, the football fields are over there.
They're going to be relocated, and then we'll, and there's going to be some internal moving of, that we're going to use some other areas during construction time, so... Yes, sir.
Heart of Texas Fair still going to be put out every year?
Every year. It is mandated by our deed from the City of Waco to McLennan County that we should put on one event a year, and that would be the Heart of Texas Fair and Rodeo.
A lot of people will be asking about that.
Yeah, it won't change it. Now, there'll be some construction time for those that were here in the late 90s and the early 2000s that came to the fair during the construction of, reconstruction of the Coliseum and the building of the Show Pavilion, then we're obviously going to have to manage that throughout the construction time period, so...
One last question.
Yes, sir.
What you going to do with Paul Tyson Field? And what we going to do with Paul Tyson Field?
It's part of, it's part of what happens, is that Paul Tyson then would become county property. It would be demolished, and we would build a new arena on that, on those, on that property. And then we would rebuild the track and the soccer fields to replace it.
This is kind of a personal question also, because I used to work for the county. Where's the dirt pile now?
Where's the dirt pile? Or where's it going?
Where's it going?
Well, dirt pile right now is back on the driving range. The dirt pile would actually be moved, if you know where the parking lot that's, that would be south of Waco High, that currently is a county property that's shared, that Waco High uses, it'll actually go on the other side of our maintenance building. That green building that's right in that would go right, basically right behind Lines Den. Yeah, no, it would be farther north than the radio tower, Carrie.
Becoming up then?
It'd be closer to where, hauling dirt would be easier from there. So, we're going to build a bunker, too, that's one of the things to put it in, so that it's all concrete and it's easier, we don't get into rock and things like we do right now when we're hauling dirt in and out.
I'm familiar with it.
Yes, sir. I knew you were.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Other questions?
Yes. Y'all going to do anything with the Lions park there?
No, sir, it is not part of this project, and so, I don't, that's beyond my level of knowledge, so...
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thank y'all.
I'm embarrassed, nobody signed up for audience for guests, I hope. Good. We'll move up to the consent agenda. I was asked to pull item C. Is there anything else anyone wants pulled from the consent agenda? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item C. Thank you, Pat, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Tekel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Item 9C is the bid award for the insurance consultant, Ms. Boteo, and I think Mr. Dupuy has some questions.
Good afternoon. Evening. Hi.
Couple of things, I guess, that I feel like I need to say about this, that I, I'm... I raised some issues last week that I had some concerns about. And I, in my thinking about it, I've arrived at the idea that I really don't have any concrete notion of how one should select an insurance agent, broker, consultant, whatever you want to call them. However, there's a couple of things about the way we did this that are a little bit bothersome for me that I want to point out, that, one, on the agenda last week initially, and this is, I don't think I've ever seen this, in a bid tabulation from the district, there's no pricing on it. And when I asked where, it turns out, okay, well, we've selected the highest-priced bidder out of the lot. I understand that that was perhaps an oversight, or, not perhaps, I shouldn't say that, but it's, when we're doing that sort of thing, we need to be very transparent about it and upfront, and clear with our explanation for why we're going that direction. I think we owe the taxpayers that level of transparency, I think. The other thing that I brought up, and I guess it's a... They're not high by a little bit. You know, there's a... You know, there's a, we excluded or disqualified a lot of bidders based on, basically their history with doing business with school districts, taking them from self-insurance to, excuse me, from fully insured to self-insurance. And I'm not clear in my mind exactly how that's different for a school district than it is for any other type of entity with a lot of employees. I'm not a know-it-all in insurance, though, and those, those differences may exist and be very real. I guess what I heard in the explanation for how we arrived at being most comfortable with Gallagher is that they're the biggest and they do the most, school districts, and there's a level of comfort with there, and I get that. I understand. Now, I will also say that in my professional life, I fight that type of thinking tooth and nail all the time, because I'm the little guy. So, I try to combat that. I would, which is not to say that there's not a very compelling argument for Gallagher to be in a position to provide the best services for our district. I'm just not sure I've seen it. We've, I, I, I saw some references to some other districts that they do work with, that I think were listed as victories. I couldn't really grasp, or get a comprehensive grasp on what it was they'd actually done for those districts. Obviously, the big deal is, and it's a, I guess, you know, it, it should be noted and said that even y'all's fee, though it's higher, as a percentage of the overall spend on insurance, it's microscopic. I, I get that. You just do a little bit better job than, you know, the next guy down, and you've eclipsed him by, you know, by, by a long shot. I can't figure out, though, how to measure your guys' performance. I, I, I went to some of the other school districts' websites, and I kind of saw what it appears, you know, it's hard to piece together, and I didn't spend a lot of hours on the study, which is what it would take or deserves, but from what I can tell about what they're paying for health insurance, it, it doesn't appear to be, I guess, demonstrably or spectacularly, or enough to where I could really see it plainly, wow, these guys are getting a whole lot better deal on their stuff than we are. And I know that you've been doing, you've been working a lot of years, working very hard to get us the best deal possible on health insurance. Now, we're going to look at some other stuff. All right. Before everybody goes to sleep on the board, I'll get to my point, that I want us to focus on, you've offered a guarantee on your services, on your fee, 50% back if we're not happy. I think, I guess I want to see some fairly specific performance measures that we need you to meet so that we know if we're happy or not, other than just sort of a general feeling of euphoria of getting to deal with some very nice people or something. How do we do that? I'm, I'm, and I, I've, insurance markets change continually. It's hard to look at last year's rates versus this year's rates. It depends on our claims, I guess, you know, for this given year. That's going to drive what, they're not creating the product. They're representing it, and they're selling it to us, or recommending it to us, I guess, in this capacity, if we want to be technically accurate, but they don't control the pricing, if I understand. Okay. So, it's, the market makers, the people that actually price this stuff are the underwriters, and I, I've, but I, I guess there's already, they can drive a better bargain with those folks than we could for ourselves. Again, things change year in and year out. How do, I, I just, I, I can't get clear on how we know if we're getting our money's worth.
I think your question is a very good question.
But if we're going to go with a high bidder, we should have some concept of that, I think.
In your board folder, there is a draft of some discussion that we have had and what Gallagher has actually had other districts complete to determine whether, in their opinion, their performance was satisfactory. Gallagher has said that 50% of their fee is on the line if, in our opinion, we feel like they didn't do a good job. So, here are some areas that.
Difficult conversation when it comes, and you're going to need more than just.
Right. Well, and.
Tell this guy to send him home with half of what he asked for.
Pretty good conversation with Nick over here this afternoon, and I told him, I said, we are going to, and the board will scrutinize your services, so we would like to ensure that we are making the right choice here. And based off our conversation, I feel comfortable with this recommendation. The, my other team members that were also evaluators feel comfortable with this recommendation. This is a draft, but this is what we have agreed on so far, that we will be looking at these areas, and any one of these areas that fails in our eyes, we will be asking for that 50% back. And I want to also note that this document was not part of our evaluation criteria to determine the recommendation that we're bringing tonight. We just want you to know, this is what we're going to look at a year later if you choose to move forward with our recommendation.
I guess what I'd like to see, and what I don't see, is something, okay, I see the, I guess, the, I don't know.
It's a draft.
Two-to-one investment guarantee, yeah, but I'm fixing to vote on it, if I understand the agenda right.
Okay. Yes, sir.
It seems like there should be something involving total spend, and I don't know how you measure that. You need to sit down, I guess, and figure out what, you have some concept of that currently, whether it involves some in-house district overhead you allocate to the project or whatever. We need to be consistent in how we do that year to year.
I agree.
For our measuring purposes, I guess, or performance measuring. It seems, it seems like it's got to involve total spend divided by number of folks covered. And I guess keeping that, it's a tough one, though. Depends on clients.
It's a total return on investment, I think, is what we're looking for, and you would have to look at your total spend versus, and, you know, I don't know if we can guarantee that we're going to see a savings in a year. I think, you know, we, and, you know, the plan design may not be an apple-to-apple plan design.
Right.
Because we, I mean, the whole goal here is to make sure that we can create a, or multiple benefit plans that are good for our employees and affordable for our employees, and at the same time, you know, hopefully, be able to control our own health plan.
How do we know if we've made a good decision? I just, I'm, I don't know the answer myself. I, I've, and for my own business, and I, I, I always wonder, because it's always, it seems like it always amounts to a lot of speculation about what could have been, but there's no real way to nail that down.
If you guys have an, I mean, you're, welcome to assist Elaine, if, if you have an idea on how to objectively show that, in fact, we've, we've got some benefit for the money spent.
So, unfortunately, Mr. DP, you summed it up very well, that it is impossible to sit here today and say that 12 months from now, we will have reduced medical cost. If, that's just simply would be an impossible task to ask, because we don't know what's going to happen with the claims. But what we are willing to say is that when we sit here, probably eight months from now.
You know, there could be regulatory changes that you benefit from, that you're not responsible for.
Correct. Correct. And that's, that's exactly why we tried to capture that in, number one, is that when we get the fully insured renewal, that will encompass the new regulatory environment, that will encompass the claims for this year, and then that would be the starting point. And from that fully insured renewal, after it's negotiated out, because, of course, the carriers always come back with a fluffed-up first attempt, but once we get it to the best fully insured option that we can get to, we would then launch the, launch into the apples-to-apples self-funded programs, in which from there, we would guarantee a two-to-one ROI on our services, and that's $210,000. It's not actually that difficult to get that level of.
Savings between fully insured and self-funded.
Self-funded. Correct. On an apples-to-apples basis, so that's, it would not be gutting the plan design to get to some perceived savings.
I can't even think about it. That sounds good. I'm not sure it's good.
How do you, how do you show the self, the fully insured cost? Do you go out and get bids from, from insurance companies?
So, what we've done in the past, and I'll, I'll use the example of San Antonio, because they, we just moved them less than five months ago from being fully insured to being self-funded. They are much larger than you, but you just bring the number, they're about five times larger, so you just bring the numbers down. They were spending approximately $55, $55 million a year on a fully insured program, and had been for 10 years. We received the renewal and then launched a complete RFP, in which we went to the market for fully insured and self-funded. The board had been very skeptical to go back to a self-funded arrangement, because they had been burned a decade in the past by not, by not allocating all the money, yeah, not funding to the maximum amount of the plan. They funded underneath the max. So, what we did is we launched it, we then came back, presented the, the first go. We presented the fully insured numbers at where they were at. We presented the self-funded numbers, all the way funded to the max. So, the complete funding, all the risk, obviously, it's capped by stop-loss after that amount. We then showed them the numbers, and it was very clear. Okay, from here, self, the self-funded was, was approximately $7 million, apples-to-apples basis, underneath the fully insured. Same carriers, same everything. They're going to save $7 million just switching the funding. And that was because of the tax savings. The tax savings is significant, and the regulatory savings is, is also significant. And so, so when you're fully insured, you have to pay premium tax on every single dollar coming through.
We have to pay something to self-insure as well.
So, you still have to pay some of the ACA taxes as well, but it's substantially reduced. So, the only amount of the premium tax you're paying is on your stop-loss. So, your stop-loss premium, in a group that size, their stop-loss was right around half a million dollars a year, so they're paying that 2.7% premium tax on half a million dollars, as opposed to $55 million of that 2.7%. So, it's a significant savings in taxes.
There is another tax on.
There are, there are.
Self-insuring.
There are fees as well, and that is built into the, to the analysis when you show the, the entire amount. The fees are substantially less when you're self-funded. The fees and taxes are substantially less.
You're giving roughly a percentage you pay on, I mean, basically, you're just paying out claims as they come in.
You are.
There's some tax amount on that, or is it just a, or is it a per insured?
It's a per insured tax.
Okay.
And the tax is actually going down as the, as the law is implemented, and next year will be the lowest since the implementation that the tax, tax goes. And so, they actually built up a fund on the, on the front side, and then are lowering it from year to year. So, the other side, it's.
Big guys built themselves an advantage.
Yeah. The other, the other side of this, where you, where you save more money than the taxes, is the, the flexibility. So, when you're with a, when you're fully insured, it is highly regulated, obviously. You have to do everything the way that the insurance company has filed it with TDI, Texas Department of Insurance. When you're self-funded, you have more latitude to explore other options, and to set your plan up as you see fit. And those savings can come into working with community partners, such as the, the hospitals, creating unique ways to access care that are advantaged, and simply, you can negotiate better deals.
Like Teladoc, or, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, Teladoc's a good example of that, but more what we're talking about is in San Antonio, we approached one of the three hospital system, we approached all the hospital systems. We negotiated a deal with one of the three hospital systems to give a preferred rate above and beyond what the carrier discount was. So, the carrier discount across the market was 50%. We negotiated a 70% discount at one particular hospital. And so, for that 70% discount, we routed care into that, into that facility, lowering the deductible for those, for, for people to access care at that hospital. And it reduced the overall cost.
Got a question.
Mr. Manning.
Ms. Botelho, one of the issues, if I remember correctly, the last couple of years, one of the issues where our insurance has been the number of claims that, that I've claimed to went up. What is the effect of having these guys, I mean, claims go up all the time? Will that have an effect on the, on our insurance?
We will have the ability and flexibility to create our own plan design. We'll be able to look at the areas where utilization is high. So, that gives us an opportunity to maybe modify in one area, improve benefits in one area, change benefits in another area.
Have been scientists, what about, I mean, is that?
When you're fully insured, those plan designs are already set and adopted by TDI, and so, you don't really have a lot of flexibility. I mean, they give you different plan designs, but it's either A, B, C, D, or, you know, E. So, you know, going self-funded would help us create our own plan design, and we can design our plan based on our utilization, and we could also add some wellness benefits to it as well. Anything else on that?
Yeah, and I think I can give an example of that. This morning, I was in Austin and presenting to Austin ISD on a program that we're implementing there. So, the key is when you're self-funded, you get all the information. So, we're getting monthly claim dumps directly from the carrier into our software. Our actuaries, our underwriters are looking through that, trying to find areas that we can improve during the plan year. So, at Austin, what we had seen is a, is a, is a kind of a shocking rise in dialysis. And so, they have 15,000 people on their plan, they have 13 people on dialysis. Those 13 people are incurring about $3.4 million in claims a year just in dialysis. That is a pretty significant amount for just 13 people. So, the program that we're implementing is we're going into the self-funded plan, carving out a separate benefit for dialysis, working with a separate vendor to file Medicare paperwork, to make Medicare the secondary payer. Thus, we can bill at Medicare and the, which is a substantially reduced rate to what we pay now, and the member won't get balance billed. So, it's good for the member, because we're covering, now the district's covering 100% of the dialysis care. They don't have to change dialysis providers. It's good for the district, because they'll save about $1.5 million, and.
You're getting Medicare to pick that up?
So, no, no, no. So, what Medicare does is Medicare acts as secondary. They don't pay a dime. But Medicare being secondary prevents the balance billing, lets us have access to Medicare rates, and prevents the balance billing of the member. So, the dialysis provider cannot go back and say, hey, you owe me the difference from what you paid to what I billed. And so, it's more to protect the member, and so, it's about trying to find unique ways. When you're self-funded, you have the flexibility of provide, of targeting those unique programs, whereas when you're fully insured, you just are stuck in the big, in the big system.
Okay, here's, you get the bills in from, and I end up every once a week, okay, a release of money to pay all the claims. Who in the district handle, I mean, we've got, do you handle that for us?
We do not pay the bills for you. The way we would, the way.
I would guess that the district's going to get, this thing's going to be a spreadsheet that's, I don't know, four or 500 line items.
It is. Correct.
We're pretty much placing, I guess, all of our faith into the TPA.
So, the way.
That they've done this appropriately, and, because you can't, we're really not in a position to assess the accuracy of the work that they've done.
Correct. So, the, what you would do is, you would set up the plan like this, so we would create the funding model. We would look at, we would look at how much our actuary is estimated to be. We'd look at the stop-loss. We fully allocate the money towards that plan, and then create fully insured equivalent rates.
At the end of the month, you're just putting.
And then you pay.
Change into this checking account.
Correct. And then that money flows out of there.
And don't spend it on something else.
And so, you can actually lock it in a, in a trust if you wanted to, to prevent that from happening. And then, the money flows out of that checking account.
Trust share.
Exactly. The money flows out of that account, and then it gets audited on a yearly basis by a third-party auditor to make sure.
Ends in reviews, selects 30 of the transactions and.
So, there's two different ways. You can do random sampling like that, probably be about 200 transactions that they'd look at, or they can actually run it through computer models in which they look at every single transaction and every single claim. Generally, we'd, we'd suggest.
Set the same computer model they use to decide to pay the thing to begin. Is that the same computer model they use to decide to pay the thing to begin with?
Uh, it's, well, it's another company's, yes, it's essentially, essentially handling another company to, to run it through the computer model. And, uh, that, then you would audit that and make sure that that is, uh, within reasonable error amount. There will be an error. In the contract, they tell you there's gonna be an error. And then it's our responsibility to trace down those 2% errors and make sure that money is refunded back within about six weeks at the close of the plan year.
Other questions?
We will also be accounting that, that speciality fund that we're looking at some of that million-dollar fund now, that proprietary fund, where we keep our workers' comp, will be accounted for in a separate fund as well, so, um, which is part of why I put a couple million dollars in that fund.
Oh.
To, in preparation-
Yeah, it's gonna need-
Doing this. But it will be accounted for separately from all of our other funds.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Sykes?
Is the stop-loss a form of cost containment?
Yes, sir, it is. Um, we would buy, or we propose that you would buy, uh, two separate kinds of stop-loss. One is called an ISL, individual stop-loss, saying that any claim cannot go over X number of dollars, in your case, probably.
Individual claims, would you say?
Individual, individuals' claims in a year. So no person's claims over a year, in a year can go over 250, 300,000, whatever deductible limit we buy. And then you buy a much less expensive form of insurance called aggregate insurance, saying the entire plan will not exceed this number during the course of the year. And then, so what we do, it's a fairly simple exercise, we take the aggregate attachment point, we take all the fixed costs, which is the insurance, the amount that you pay the TPA to actually, uh, file the claims, and then we would take the, uh, any, uh, ACA fees, build those all together. That is then your total plan liability. We then, the actuaries then create rates that would spread across the plans to fund to that overall number. So it's the same thing, actually, as your fully insured does right now. You're just acting as your own, uh, insurance company into there and then buying reinsurance, which is the stop-loss to protect the overall assets.
Who, I guess in the, in the, in the final analysis, I get, I have two questions, actually. You know, if you were engaged, what would be your end product that you would deliver to us? Number two is, uh, well, let me, let me have you answer that first.
So the, the end product is actually, there's, there's several different products coming from several different divisions within the company. Uh, my job is to provide kind of a strategic direction, you know, try to find new ways to save money, try to fit the plan to your culture, uh, things of that nature, and I'd provide the, the softer, I guess, the soft approach to the plan. Uh, then the actuaries and their side is to provide those plan certifications, to go in there, develop that formula, break those rates out, actuarially certify and stamp those, that those are correct. They would also provide the GAZB reports, which you guys talked about a little bit earlier today. They provide the IBNR reports as well on a quarterly basis, the incurred but not recorded. So there's a delay in the claims. If you were to say it's the, you know, Christmas Day and you go into the doctor, the doctor won't file that claim till the next year, but we need to report that in the, in the other plan year. So we provide those reports to you and the adjustments for that, and that would come from the actuarial side. And then our compliance side, uh, the attorneys, they go through and they make sure the specific, the, the specimen plan documents are correct. They make sure your HIPAA, COBRA, uh, DOL audits are all under wraps and that you have the, the supporting documentation there in case you were ever audited or challenged in any way. And so the compliance side delivers that as well. And so while we quarterback it, those other, those other section, those other divisions, uh, provide a huge amount of work and a huge amount of value to the overall project.
Then the other is, given the fact that we have, uh, a large degree of flexibility in plan design, who does the plan design?
So ultimately, it's y'all's, uh, responsibility, but we would provide the, uh, the assumptions, the cost assumptions. We would provide, uh, you know, a lot of the ideas and the benchmarking behind it to show you what other school districts do in your area, in your region, in your size around Texas, to give you an idea of what would help you attract and retain employees.
So, and I think we'll still have another meeting in August where we, I mean, like we always do.
Okay.
Where we sort of approve a list of like deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, prescription deal, all, that, that'll still be in our, it's not our wheelhouse. It's definitely not our wheelhouse.
Per view.
But in, on our to-do list, I guess.
I just, I'm not seeing how that fits together, 'cause normally we're relying on insurance companies to assist in that process, right?
So the, the pricing actually comes from our actuaries. So our actuaries say, if, if you came to us and said, I'd wanna see that deductible 500 less, our actuaries say that will cost you 2% more of your total plan design, or whatever it may be. And then ultimately, because you're buying the reinsurance, because you're buying the stop-loss, the stop-loss company comes up with the aggregate, which we use to build the total, uh, liability for you. So at the end, while we provide, uh, good estimates and working estimates and checks and balances to the insurance company, at the end of the day, the stop-loss company has to sign off on what those plan designs are and make sure it fits within their aggregate claim number.
Is the aggregate claim number dependent on prior year's experiences?
Yes, sir.
Would it be 1, 3, 5, whatever?
Yes, sir. It's three, at least three years of claims experience in that aggregate number.
Thank you.
Ms. Sykes, other questions? All right, thank you.
Um, well, I, you know, I, I think the only other thing, Nick, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right. Nick, I'm probably gonna vote against you and, but I don't want you to take it personally and, uh, hunt me down the rest of your days, trying to make me rue the decision. But there's another element to this that I wanna bring out to our administration that, you're a smart guy, you understand insurance. I think we've got people here in town that are smart people that understand insurance. We, uh, you know, we have at least one local vendor that I know of that, uh, actually an adoptive school partner. They mentor our kids at Indian Spring Middle School. They are very generous with the district, give us money every year, a thousand bucks for our outstanding teacher award. We pretty much threw their proposal out in the first round because they haven't done specifically this for a school district before. I don't know that they are the best answer to our solution. That's not my point. I'm just, I, I'll go back to my original comments. I don't know how to measure this, but I'm a bi-local guy, and I feel strongly about that. Uh, and in the, in the absence of, I think, a more compelling argument, I feel pretty strongly that, uh, I, we need to do everything we can to support the folks that support us. It's just good business. And, uh, that's all I'll say on the matter. Thank you for being here, and I, I, I mean no disrespect to either you or the administration, and I, I hope you'll accept that as, as it was intended.
Mr. Dupree, other questions or comments?
Um, and they were a lot lower.
Well, I just, um, it seemed to be a lot of questions raised about the process and whether or not we followed the process and, um, um, questions about this being the low bidder. But I've noticed, looking at the RFP that we published, the criteria only placed 40% on the price and then included other criteria, um, to make up the other 60% of the points that could be awarded. So for a total of 100 points, um, the committee established criteria that only gave 40 points to price. And so, um, because Gallagher was the highest price, they received the lowest points. But yet, when you look at the committee's consideration of the other criteria, they, um, still come out winning your recommendation because of their, um, the high score they have on the other 60% of the criteria established. So I, I just, I just wanna be careful to, um, you know, that's what this RFP process allows you to do, to establish criteria that's important to the district so that we don't just pick the low bidder, but yet isn't someone that maybe meets our needs. And so from what I can tell, from the information that you've provided to us in our packet last week and this week, you followed the process, you had established and published criteria, all of the bidders responded. Um, I'm not aware that any bidder has complained. Are, are there any complaints from any of the proposers about the process or that you didn't follow the process or that you incorrectly graded their proposer, proposals?
No, we have not received any complaints.
Okay. Well, so not having conceived, um, received any complaints about the process or the criteria or, um, the grades that have been published now in our packet, I, um, support the recommendation by the administration. We had five people on the committee. It looks like y'all spent a lot of time on this, considering the fact that I don't, how many you got in total? Um, fifteen?
Twelve altogether?
Twelve criteria, I mean, twelve, twelve proposals. Um, it's a lot of time that went into this. Um, and so I appreciate that and I appreciate the care. And it's been something that I know your department has spent a lot of time on, um, over the last six years. So maybe, um, I hope, um, if you get the job, that you can, uh, show us that this is money well spent.
Ms. Sykes?
I will say in that regard, uh, thank you for being here, Ms. Teckel, uh, about the bid tabulation. If my math is correct, Elaine, your bid tabulation did not tabulate correctly for Gallagher?
I'm sorry. Are you looking at the actual agenda or the workshop agenda? Is there was a-
Our agenda tonight.
Our agenda. The bid tabulation with the price, or is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
You allocated 23 points to Gallagher and you brought down on the subtotal 22 points. So in actuality, they probably had one point more for the total. And I might add, Cheryl, yours is the same way. Anyway, it, it, they scored 83 instead of 82.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, I was, I was looking last week at the narrow margins. Well, Gallagher just got another point on their margin, I guess, is what.
Another one by two points and still one.
That's right, that's right. So, I just, and I didn't check them all. Those are just ones I just eyeballed, so.
Thank you, Ms. Syke.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Pettis?
Elaine, um, I know we, we discussed this very minimum, but what happened to the idea of, uh, uh, having our employees get their own insurance?
I mean, just giving them, yeah, there, we can't, we cannot do that. Um, by, by law, we have to provide health insurance for our employees. We have to offer, um, that to them. There is a minimum amount that we can pay toward district contribution, but the board has been generous, um, to pay more than that statement. Um, but that is not an option, and especially with the Affordability Healthcare Act.
But that is law, right?
We have to provide health insurance to our employees, yes.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yeah, Ms. Sykes?
I think I tried to throw this last week. If you look at other examples of implementations of changing from fully insured to self-insured, have you done a comparison, or can you comment on the comparison, of the all-in-all-done per-employee cost to the district on one versus the other? Do you always see savings in the self-insured? Do you see my question?
In, in a vast majority, 75%, you can see savings. And basically, the only time you would not see savings is if an insurance company purposefully prices to win it. Like buys, we would call it buying the business in here. They aggressively price the fully insured in order to win the business. That can happen, uh, if for some reason an insurance company wants to burn reserves because they have to meet a minimum loss ratio occasionally. They will buy bad business to lose money on the business, to burn the reserves, to then use it to increase their market strength in that area. However, that used to happen a lot more when there was six insurance options. And now being that there's three viable ones and, uh, big, big viable ones in this area, there, it, it's happening less and less.
Or there was a wake-up call the following year?
There is, well, there's always, uh, the next year you will pay for the, for them buying the business. 'Cause they will always get their money eventually.
Thank you.
Thanks for saying that. Other questions or comments?
Only thing I would add, I, I think, I, I'm comfortable with the administration's review and scoring of this. Uh, I do recall, uh, several years ago, sitting in this room, actually, with a luncheon that we had with, uh, the Association of General Contractors that were concerned about the metric we were using on some of the construction bid. And they actually ended up, I think, submitting a new template that slightly varied the weight given to some of the criteria uh, so that local vendors and local contractors had an opportunity, uh, to be more competitive. I, I agree with Carrie that we do need to make sure that we don't set up criteria uh, that intentionally or unintentionally, frankly, preclude local, uh, contractors from being able to have the opportunity to bid uh, or, or be competitive because of the way we've set the scoring criteria. And as long as we're sensitive to that and we're always looking at our metrics with a eye towards, is this being fair to all the folks, uh, all the, uh, proposed bidders, uh, then I'm comfortable with it. Just, uh, again, maybe that means occasionally sitting down with agents like we did with the contractors and saying, is this a metric that you're comfortable with? I mean, I think it says something that nobody filed a complaint, that, that nobody objected, uh, to the process, uh, but, you know, if, that doesn't preclude the possibility that we need to look at the scoring and, and the weight, uh, occasionally from time to time to make sure we're being fair to all the bidders. Mr. Dupree?
Nobody local even made it into the scoring for what it's worth.
What's that?
Well, they were rejected. I mean, I, to me, the only three, the best I can tell, the only three that were scored were-
You dropped nine out for either not meeting the district needs or the criteria. Yeah, I think that's probably true on this one.
So, I mean, adjusting the scoring is not necessary, but, uh-
Well, not specific to this, but in all our bids, we need to make sure that the bidding, the scoring's done such a way that it's fair to everyone.
Agreed. And also didn't look at the specific criteria they were rejected on. I guess we just need to, I, we need to make absolutely sure that they're being rejected on legitimate criteria and that it is, okay. This is the issue I brought up. What's the difference between a school district and just an entity of seventeen, eighteen hundred people on a health plan? And, I mean, they're, they're people, they get sick, they file claims, insurance company pays off. You know, I, it, it's, to me and my peculiar calculus on the situation, it's just not that different. But, uh, I just wanna make, it, it, there is this, I don't wanna go into the pricing of the deal, but there's a substantial amount of money involved. And I just, I wanna make sure that we're rejecting them on, I'm not saying they weren't. I haven't looked at what all, I just, I saw one line, uh, that said basically they hadn't done any recent work with the school district.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's always a legitimate screen or criteria for, you know, accepting scoring from.
Ms. Brownson?
It's hard for the world to change and evolve. It, well, prior experience, you can't be here. Well, how am I really gonna get it? I just, I don't like this kind of criteria.
Ms. Brownson, something you wanted to add? I saw you walk up.
Please. Well, I just wanted to say on the evaluation score sheet, it is dictated by law on how we evaluate bids. Now, it's within our right to reallocate the points. We can do it on a per-bid basis. Every bid could be different. Um, if it is a federally funded project, price does have to have the highest number of points associated to it because that's dictated by our Edgar law. So, um, we are pretty much fixed in how we evaluate, but we can change the points.
Just the allocation.
Less for price, more for other areas or vice versa.
Right. That's all I'll say.
Like, like, you know, if you wanna have the credit, you gotta have a chance. Okay, if you want credit, you, they gotta give you a chance too, to build your credit. But if you don't do that, you know, their credit's never gonna be any good. That's my point, you know, right?
That's a good analogy, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments?
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion on the administration's recommendation to approve Gallagher Public Entity and Scholastic Group, uh, as the, uh, to be awarded our consultant bid. Is there a motion?
So, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Teckel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Well, probably need to do a roll call, because I couldn't, could I tell? All right, you want to call the roll, because I think somebody didn't vote that time around.
All right. Mr. Manning.
No.
Mr. Dupree?
Nay.
Mr. Pettis?
No.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Sykes?
Aye.
Ms. Teakle? And Ms. Porter?
I have one question. Can I ask that?
Yes.
Sorry. Elaine, um, so, I've just kind of been listening to all of this, and I do, I agree with points that Carrie has brought up, and then I agree with some other points that Ms. Teakle has brought up. Uh, my question is, are we moving to self-pay? Is that what you're, or self-insured, or whatever this is called? Is that what, yeah, is that what you are wanting to see the district move to?
That's what our goal is, and, um, that's what Gallagher will do for us. They will evaluate the fully funded versus self-funded option, um, and, um, will do the negotiating, uh, for the discounts with the providers, um, you know, everything that, uh...
But they're not the insurers, they're just consulting. They're saying, take this insurance, take that insurance, whatever, this is how you set it up.
But that is our goal, yes.
That's our goal. And, okay, and none of the other agencies, uh, groups were able to do that, or able to kind of guide us in that way, for self-insured?
Um, I don't want to say that they are not able to do it, or else they would not have submitted a proposal, um, but our, our, um, specifications were clear, uh, when we wrote, um, the request for proposal, um, that, uh, we, uh, wanted to, uh, see the experience of, um, of similar services with other school districts.
And so, do you know the difference between a district our size going from, uh, self-insured and then versus, I guess, whatever the other option is?
Fully insured to self-insured.
Fully insured, yeah. Do we know what the price differential is, based off of a district, kind of in our, our size? Do we know, kind of preliminary without, I mean, do, do we have an idea of that? Do we know, you know, I know you've been talking about San Antonio, and I appreciate that, but that's five times bigger than what we are. So what is, do you have something comparable to our district?
It, uh, yes, so it, it would be between, it's between five and seven percent. So even though the numbers are larger, it's all functions as a, as a percentage of the overall plan. Between five and seven percent, you expect to save, through the, uh, different advantages of being self-funded over fully insured.
Okay. So, it just kind of is a five to seven percent across the board, no matter the size of the district?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Elaine, do you think that, um, so you're saying that they're going to be able to pick the best insurance for the employees of this district? We're going to be able to do a cost savings for the district, but also provide excellent insurance? That's your opinion?
That is my opinion, and that's what we will be holding them accountable for.
Okay.
All right, before you vote, because the question had already been called, and then we got additional questions, and the, the, anybody want to change their vote from what they've already voted, based on what they've heard? All right, Ms. Quarterwag, then go ahead, you can cast your vote now.
Then I vote yes.
All right. Uh, motion carries four to three. Thank you, folks, thank you, Ms. Patel. That concludes the consent agenda. I think we are now down to item ten C, which is our presentation by Tasby, uh, regarding the qualifications and characteristics of the next superintendent. Robert, I think you're up. Dr. Duran?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board members. Uh, just like to take a little personal point of privilege to do two things and introduce Jack Dameron. Jack is with Texas Association of School Boards. If you have not met him, he is your field service representative. We use all of our field service representatives, uh, during our searches statewide, so there are a lot of folks behind me that are, that are on our team, including Mr. Felton and, and Ms. Strauss, that are, that are heading up the department. And also, just to thank you all, I'd be remiss, on behalf of TASB, if I didn't thank you for your service during School Board Recognition Month, and, uh, we certainly appreciate that. Um, we are here to facilitate any questions that you might have on this document that we put together for you. It's called our Qualifications and Characteristics Document. Basically, it's a summary of all of the data we've collected during our profile sessions, uh, and it's, it serves a couple of purposes. One, it provides guidance to the candidates. They will be given a narrative that will be, we will post on the application, so you'll see all of their, uh, narratives as they respond to these questions. So as we go over the questions, keep that, uh, in mind, and then hopefully, secondly, we've captured, uh, you know, we, we work really hard to capture the, the comments that we have collected during those profile sessions, both in the community meetings and the online surveys. I'm not going to go over each one of the comments, that's for you to have, and I'm assuming that you all have received this document, is that correct?
Yes, it was emailed to everyone by Ms. Gonzalez earlier in the week, and then there are copies here.
Okay, good.
Both the summaries of the sessions, and then the online.
Okay, good. Uh, yeah, and by the way, I do want to thank staff, uh, Ms. Beebe back at home, our support staff, she, she just commented how helpful the, the administration has been, and, and y'all have been as well, setting up these profile sessions. So, without further ado, I'd like to just go ahead and go right to the, uh, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, go right to the qualification and characteristics statements. And what I'd like to do, uh, and if it's, uh, if it's the favor of the board, I'd like to just read through each one of them, and you can make notes and go back over them, if you have any edits at all. Uh, it's important that we catch all of your comments and make sure that we approve a document, again, that we're going to post to these candidates, so, um, we need to make sure that we are, if we edit, that we capture those before you vote on these.
Board members, if you look at your document called Setting a New Course, which is the primary report, the document he's talking about is the back page.
Yeah.
Which has all the...
If anyone needs one, we have extra copies.
The last page. Okay. That was the online's. Flip that over, it should be right there.
It's a list of eleven qualifications and characteristics. You ready?
Everybody got it?
Okay, one question's last, last page?
Yes, the back page. Qualifications and characteristics, one through eleven.
Same thing that they said. Got you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Number one, we're, uh, an experienced leader who is a highly effective communicator and public speaker with strong interpersonal skills. Number two, has a proven record of developing successful and effective professional relationships with businesses and community groups. Number three, is an effective delegator who empowers staff members to carry out their responsibilities independently, while remaining knowledgeable and accountable for the district's overall progress and carrying out its mission. Is a motivational leader who is attentive to staff morale, and has a proven ability in building an effective management team, engaged in collaborative planning, problem-solving, and decision-making. Know school financial management and state funding laws. A creative thinker and innovator with a history of improving student achievement and success. A reasoned, steady decision-maker who takes the time to understand the situation and can make the tough decisions. Number eight, able to work in partnership with the Board of Trustees and build a climate of candor, mutual trust, and cooperation. Number nine, approachable, friendly, open, and optimistic. Number ten, a role model for integrity, fairness, and honesty. And number eleven, has a commitment to the vision, mission, and goals of Waco ISD. And again, our candidates would, would see these now on their applications, and, and would provide a narrative under each one of those, describing their experiences, philosophies, ideas, thoughts about each one of these topics. So, with that, I'll just turn it over to you, if you want to comment on any of these, each one of these, your pleasure.
Ms. Pettis? Qualifications and characteristics. I believe, Mr. Duran, you meet all those qualifications. Do you plan to put an application in there, do you?
I see somebody clapping back there. Somebody's going, you're bringing her brother home.
Yeah.
He's a university high school graduate.
Well, yeah, that I am. And by the way, my statute of limitations is up by now, too, at University High School. You've already named a king tonight, so that, that's why it's been taken. But, uh, congratulations on that, too. I worked with his older brother, uh, at University Middle, when I was there, as assistant principal. Brian, Brian, I think, yeah. That was neat to see. But thank you, Mr. Perez, I think, uh, I don't have a comment on that.
I will say, you're not the first one to approach him about that, I, uh...
Yeah, that's true.
Have this discussion as well, no.
Uh, it would be an honor, really, it really would be.
Uh, other questions or comments, particularly on one through eleven, and, uh, so it's clear, I guess, this will be posted with the job listing, and then applicants will essentially address each of these eleven points, and, and basically, an essay question, is that?
That's correct, in writing, yeah.
But, Mr. Duran, you know, you're a high school graduate, once a Trojan, always a Trojan, right? Yeah?
I did graduate, yes, sir, and received really good, yeah, absolutely, that's true.
Dr. Duran, looking at a lot of the comments that were made, there were a lot of folks who talked about prior experience, and there was talk about prior experience, uh, in districts with high levels of poverty, or prior experience with diverse communities and diverse populations. Um, I know that's not specifically set out as a requirement or qualification, uh, but obviously, when we go through the interview process, that doesn't preclude us from, obviously, we, we can vet those experiences through the questioning, through the interviews, I guess, is that...
That's a great point, and I think that's probably a good idea. And, and you remind me, I think, I think I met with, with each one of you, except for Mr. Manning, you, you weren't available, I know you were, you were, uh, unavailable.
Working.
Yeah. But, uh, as I mentioned, in the one, I think I mentioned to all of you, between now and, of course, when we get to the candidates, start thinking about some of those type of questions, that, that may be, you know, even beyond this. Be very important.
More specific than some of this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we need to adopt this, unless there's any revi, revisions that anyone wants to make to a particular one of these, or if you want to drop out one of these and add something else, or I guess we could just add one and go with twelve instead of eleven, if somebody were so inclined. Uh, are there any changes anybody wants to make this evening?
I can't wait to meet this person.
All right, then, I will entertain a vote on the recommendation to approve the leadership qualifications and characteristics that have been presented by Tasby.
So move.
I'm sorry. I was going to be elaborate, but go ahead.
Mr. Manning has made the motion, you can be elaborate in your second.
I will, in my second, uh, move to approve the leadership qualifications and characteristics as presented by Tasby.
Please note in the minutes that Mr. Manning made the motion, but that Mr. Sykes was very eloquent in his seconding. Uh, are there any other questions, comments, or discussions? All right, then all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do want to note, for folks who did not read the summary at the beginning, uh, that more than three hundred seventy-five citizens in this community participated in the process, either by attending one of the sessions or going online. And so we've got a broad cross-section of employees, and parents, and students, uh, and, and individuals in this community who have helped define the qualifications and characteristics on behalf of the board. Thank you for participating, being part of this process. And thank you for, I guess, for a couple of days, having three different facilitators here.
Yep.
Facilitating those sessions, so, thanks.
Yep.
Tasby to giving the public the maximum number of opportunities to participate.
Mm-hmm.
And I might add, uh, personally, when I was interviewed by Dr. Duran, I appreciate your probing questions, you're very good at that.
Oh, thank you. No, that was for a purpose. Mr. President...
That's a characteristic of a superintendent.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Duran, go ahead.
Jack, we're trying, right? Ms. President, I would like to say, because we will not be back, of course, until the deadline of the application, I just want to remind you, that is, um, midnight on February twenty-second. Within, within forty-eight hours, you're, you're going to get those applications, you're going to get two emails from us, uh, on the instructions on how to open up the applicant's materials, and then you'll also get one from the software that we have on, on, uh, that will provide you all of the applications. We will have them, uh, you know, sorted, based, uh, primarily, beginning with those that are currently serving as superintendents, or have served as superintendents, and then, uh, those that are not. So you'll be, you'll be getting those again February, probably February twenty-second from us, and if, obviously, if you have any questions or any problems pulling any of those documents up, uh, we will provide you, uh, through Sandra, we can provide you some help with that, at our shop.
Is there going to be a limit?
You will see, on the app, on the applicants, you will see everyone that applies, everyone that completes, I'm sorry, the application.
With the qualifications?
Yes.
Or no matter what?
No, you'll see them all, yes.
You'll see them all, and then we will meet here with Tasby.
Yeah.
And narrow that list down to, uh, the, the number we want to bring in for initial interviews.
What, what you're saying, what you're going, uh, it's going to be the top first, and just kind of...
Yeah, generally, unless it's, unless you want them sorted another way, generally, boards like to see, you know, sitting superintendents and/or those that have served first, uh, and then you'll get some central office administrations, administrators, that may be very good candidates, you know, sort of second, that are, that are not sitting, or former superintendents, and then you'll, you'll, you'll get others also, but that's the way they'll come sorted to you. And one more thing is that, we, we generally like to ask that you come with your, uh, for the, for the meeting, when we debrief, when you come with your top ten, uh, five to ten of your top candidates, as you look through those. It'll save us a lot of time at our meeting.
I did have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Felton earlier today, he had to present at another school board this evening, over in East Texas. Uh, I know a couple of you have had folks call you and say, boy, I think so-and-so would be a great candidate, I'd really like somebody to approach them. If you'll submit those names to Tasby, they'll, they'll help assist, uh, contact anybody who you feel like that needs to be made aware of this opportunity, so, uh, they, they will be happy to take that information.
We're going to provide you a hard copy of the instructions for AploTrak, our software, it's pretty intuitive. Uh, you'll also get this electronically, but it's not, it's not a bad deal to get them both ways.
Thank Dr. Duran.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Uh, item twelve, announcements, Mr. Geetson?
Ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, of the board, and people watching at home, I want to take about ninety seconds and go over some of the big things happening on, uh, Waco ISD right now. Cesar Chavez, eighth-grade girls' basketball team, won the middle school championship last night. Men are playing, the boys are playing tonight, don't, uh, know yet, trying to get the final score on that, don't have that yet. Top, our number-one-ranked University Trojans men's basketball team does not play again until next Tuesday night, at home against A&amp;M Consolidated. Coach Rodney Smith's team having a really good year. Waco High's Lions will be home tomorrow night to face off against Temple in a conference clash, and the Lady Lions will be in Temple. Hillcrest PDS Showtime Junior Performance, January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at seven PM, and the UIL Orchestra Solo and Ensemble Competition is January twenty-eighth, from eight-thirty to three. If you've got a little cheerleader in the family, Waco High's hosting the Little Lion Cheer Camp, January twenty-eighth from ten to one, and then on January thirtieth, from five-thirty to six-thirty. Cost is thirty dollars, twenty-five for Waco ISD employees, and, uh, it's at the Waco High Field House for future cheerleaders ages three through twelve. And you can go to the district's website for more details. They will perform January thirty-first at the Varsity Girls Basketball Game. That should be a treat, to see those little cheerleaders. If you've got a young soccer player, UHS's soccer team's hosting their Soccer Buddy Mentorship Program for elementary kids. Coach Chapman here, is at the high school on Saturdays in January, February, and March. And how about this, five hundred elementary school kids have signed up for that Soccer Buddy program. Congratulations, Coach, you do a great job with your players and community. They're learning not only soccer skills, but also life skills, uh, at those Soccer Buddy camps. That info also on our website. University Theater presenting the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, February second through the fourth, uh, night shows, and on the fifth, the matinee show at UHS's PAC. And, um, also a shout-out to Members' Choice Credit Union for joining our Adopt a School Partners Program. They'll be the first adopt a school partner for Wiley Opportunity Center, and working as reading buddies on that. And then one last item, next Monday, Waco ISD softball players will get their first chance to set foot on the new artificial turf at the softball complex. Used to be the Astrodome had the only artificial turf, and now, uh, that complex will be next Monday at three-thirty. Coach Tusa will host a ribbon-cutting event for that exciting new facility.[1789.97] at 3:30, Coach Tusa will host a ribbon-cutting event for that exciting new facility, that will be another sports attraction, not only for our teams, but also schools wanting to schedule postseason games in the community, rain or shine, so, proud of our athletic complex. Some of the things going on in Waco ISD coming up in the next few weeks, and we appreciate the support of all the people at home, and also the Board of Trustees, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geetson. Are there any other announcements from the board?
I do want to make one comment. I just want all of you to know how much I appreciate the tone and the tenor of the discussion during the insurance conversation, and that everybody on this board, in my 15 years, has continued to remain respectful, even when we disagree, and I think there are a lot of folks in Washington and Austin who could learn a lot from, from watching this group from time to time.
I don't disagree that hard.
I know, but you presented very well, and I appreciate everybody airing their, hearing each other out this evening, and I thought it was very, I thought you all did a very good job. All right, the Harry Noah objections will stand adjourned.
I agree.